Wayne Westland Board of Education is 7:00 PM on April 25th, and we are going to begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, led by Middleton Elementary School's Silas Blovalt, Christopher Foster, and Kamia Evans Sullivan. If you would, come up to the room, Mr. Toko. Whenever you're ready.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Good job.
Great job.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
We need to introduce our students?
We have three students, Silas Blavelt. Silas is a second grade student in Mrs. Simmers' class. Silas has a four-year-old sister named Stella, two dogs, one being a golden doodle named Thrasher, and an Australian shepherd puppy, which I know has probably got a lot of energy and keeps you very busy, named Axel. He also has a cat named Blue. The thing that Silas likes most about school is going to special classes and taking tests because he likes to see how high a score he can get. His favorite subject is math. When Silas grows up, he would like to be a police officer like his grandpa. One thing Silas thinks people should know about him is that he is good at math and he is kind.
Silas?
We also have Christopher Foster. Christopher is a fifth grade student in Mr. Sorensen's class. Christopher has three sisters, Silver, Zoe, and Kendra, and two brothers, Cash and Michael. Christopher has two dogs, Kane and Kaylee, or Cali, and one cat named, I'm gonna say Rhine because, is it, what do you say? Rainy? Rain, a rainy, which one was it?
Rain.
We've gotta get it right, rain, okay.
It doesn't matter, it won't come anyway.
Well, names are very, are very important. The things Christopher likes most about school are recess and math. His favorite subject is math. When Christopher grows up, he wants to be a professional BMX racer. The thing that Christopher would like people to know about him is that he is good at math, he likes school, and he is good at BMX racing. Christopher. And we have Kamia, Kamia Evans Sullivan. Kamia is a fifth grade student in Mrs. Wade's class. Kamia has a 13-year-old brother named Keshan, or Kishan. Kishan?
Keshan.
Okay. And a four-year-old sister named Zaya, I got that one right, right? And Kamia has many pets, one dog, two cats, one snake, and seven tarantulas. You see how excited people are about that? The thing that Kamia likes best about school is coming to school and seeing her friends. Her favorite subject is reading. Her favorite author is Reyna Telgemeyer of the Smile series. When Kamia grows up, she wants to be a veterinarian. One interesting fact about Kamia is that her favorite animal is a cat.
I would like you all just for a moment, if you could stand here, Silas. I have an award for each of you. Maya and Christopher. The award says, let me read this, let me read this, Silas. By the way, there's the police chief for City of Westland right here. I'm gonna be a police officer. The award of recognition presented for participation in the flag ceremony during a regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Wayne Westland Community Schools. Thank you very much. You introduce them.
Yeah. Real quick too, I'd like to introduce Ms. Michaels and Mr. Lane, the administrators at Hamilton. Thanks again for everything you do on a daily basis.
Okay, we know you probably have homework to do. If you wanna get out of here, go do it, we understand.
Especially math.
Thank you all.
And Chief, don't forget you got a recruit there. He's gonna be ready that fast. 249.22 on our agenda this evening is roll call. Thank you. Mr. Neal, please?
Yes, Mr. Buckaloo.
Here.
Ms. May is not currently present. Ms. Hines is not currently present. Mr. Albrecht?
Present.
Dr. Weaver?
Present.
Myself, I am present, and President Cox.
And I am present. Let the record reflect that both Ms. Hines and Ms. May did contact the chair prior to the meeting, and they have excused absences. 250.22 is recognitions and presentations, Dr. Dignan.
Thank you, President Cox. Good evening, school board and community. At this time, I'm gonna call up Zoe Bukis. Mr. Toko, if you could hand this award to her. Real quick, Zoe won our 41st school district spelling bee. So again, we're very, very proud of her. Thank you, Zoe, you can sit down.
Zoe, what's the, what's the word you?
What was the word, Zoe?
What was the word, Zoe?
I think it was WATC.
There you go. Great job, and thank you again, Zoe, for coming out this evening.
That's it, get the Oscar and head out the door. That's the right way to do it, congratulations.
Best part of the meeting. Moving on, I'm gonna ask that we play the video. We're here tonight too with the Wayne Memorial Girls Basketball Team. We're gonna play the video, then we're gonna ask them to come up for a picture. The last five years, in my opinion, I'm not just saying it because I'm in Wayne Westland, they've built the best girls' basketball program in the state of Michigan. So they have so much to get proud, be proud of. I know there was a slight at the state semifinals, so we wanted to put something together for you young ladies because we're so proud of you. I'm gonna ask that Scott Kazmersky, the Wayne Memorial Athletic Director, and Dr. Jim Anderson come up, and again, hand out these awards of recognition. And then when they get up here, we will have the girls' basketball team and Coach Jarvis and his staff come up. Again, I can't say enough about everything that you guys have accomplished over the last couple of years, so you have so much to be proud of. If you guys would come up here now. Yeah, come on, I'm gonna hop in the middle. Did you twist your ankle?
We got some injuries on the court? It's okay then. That's a battle wound.
Can we give them a round of applause? Again, you guys can grab a seat, and if you want to, make sure Coach Jarvis doesn't take you in the gym tonight, so, knowing him. Again, if we can give one more round of applause, because this team's phenomenal, thanks.
Team, I would just like to say on behalf of the Board of Education, thank you for all the smiles you gave us over the last couple of years.
At this time, I'm gonna ask that Mr. Bessick and the Chief of the Westland Police Department come up to the podium. They are gonna give a quick presentation on a crossing guard safety program that we've partnered with.
They do have homework tonight, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Dignan. Obviously, the safety and security of our students is extremely important to us. And while we plan for all kinds of things throughout the course of the year, the day-to-day things are just as important as planning for big events. As you know, we're responsible for student safety from the time they leave their house to the time they get back to their door at the end of the day. And to that end, the City of Westland currently has 12 crossing guards for our Westland schools. We have 12 crossing guards, and they're employed by the City of Westland Police Department. We have 11 schools of these, 10 utilized crossing guards, 16 crossing guard posts which are covered twice a day by one to two crossing guards each. The issue that the police have seen, and we've kind of been the bearers of this as well, they get paid three hours a day to be crossing guards. Their pay is currently $11 per hour, and there's so few of them that if there's ever someone who is not there for, you know, for some kind of reason, there's no substitute to take their place. So when the chief came to Dr. Dignan earlier this year with a proposal, and I'll let him explain the proposal and then talk a little bit about the long-term benefits. So Chief, if you'd be kind enough?
Yeah, thank you, sir. No, real quick, I appreciate you giving the opportunity to talk about this program. I think it's really, really important, and I'll just kind of give you a quick version of why. You know, through, we all know throughout this nation, we've seen repeated acts of violence in our schools. And as a police department, as a school, we know that we do a lot to protect our kids and everything inside the walls of our schools. Well, what we're projecting here, proposing here, is kind of a next-level barrier of security for our students. It's what's going on outside the walls. And that's where I feel that actually our kids are in a little more danger than people take for, people really think about. We've got issues where we've got, you know, student violence, there's bullying, there's fighting, there's the COVID cases caused an increase of parents driving kids to school that we've all seen. So the biggest complaint we've been getting from the school is at dismissal time and drop-off time, just this volume of parents trying to get in and out of the school parking lot so quickly. Well, we still have students that are walking or riding their bikes there. So what we're doing here with this new program is we want to take it to a whole nother level. We want to train our crossing guards in everything that we feel is important, things like CPR, first aid, stranger danger. We're gonna introduce them to the concepts of active shooter threats and things like that that they can, they can look at. We want to equip them with uniforms that give them the appearance of authority. And then we want to train them to have ways to communicate back to the staff inside the school if there is a problem, that way we can get the police and the fire there immediately. The police department, the fire department are gonna take care of this training, and I really do believe it's next level. We're gonna take a look at trying to put crossing guards and teach them the proper way to direct traffic. Instead of having the teachers try to come out and facilitate this parent drop, this parent drop-off time, we're gonna use these crossing guards to do that too. The projected plan would take us from 11 to up to, I believe we're looking at 27 crossing guards. We're looking at increasing their pay so we can keep them. You know, like we were saying right here, at $11 an hour, it's kind of hard to get somebody to wake up at 7 o'clock in the morning in February. With this program, we're gonna have backup crossing guards. We're gonna train them properly, we're gonna give them the equipment they need. And I think what we're gonna do is you're gonna start seeing other cities mirroring this. And this is a way that I think that we can add an extra barrier protection to our kids as they're coming to and from school outside of the walls.
And the other part that I think is important is this, they'll be a lot more connected to the buildings. They'll be, you know, the administration of each building regularly. They'll have the communication devices so they can get in contact with the buildings, the administration. And that whole part about just being more connected, being a part of the, being a part of the whole security team of that building is important as well. But again, I thought that $15 per hour part would be extremely important to getting a deep pool of applicants and making it, you know, more appealing to people. The total cost, currently the City of Westland pays for all of the crossing guards. Based on the amount of the pay and also the supplies, materials, the radios, crossing guard vests, whatever you have, the signs, the total cost for 2022, 2023 would be $243,000. It would be a shared cost now, so our part would be $121,500 per year. We would pay for this through our ESAR funds for the first two years, and then we would reevaluate it after those first two years, decide, you know, what we, what we see, what we like, what we can tweak. And then after that, we would probably explore a COPS grant to pay for it after that. So the plan is to pay for it through the ESAR funds for those first two years. Questions at all?
Questions, members of the board? No questions, thank you very much, great initiative.
Thank you again, gentlemen, appreciate it. Moving on, I'd like to introduce Ms. Samara. She last week ran two community forums with Wayne Community College about our new early-middle college program. I must admit, I was quite impressed with the numbers and especially the in-person group last week. So I'm gonna turn it over to you for a quick presentation.
I'm sorry. Good evening, board, Dr. Dignan, executive cabinet, Wayne Westland Community. So since I'm back, that means we've been approved to be an early-middle college. We had our interview with the state of Michigan and in an unprecedented experience for our post-secondary partner, there were only two questions asked, and we received high comment about our application, and we received high commendations about our plans to provide nutrition and transportation services to our students. A quick review, early college is a five-year high school program delivered in conjunction with a partner post-secondary. Our students will earn simultaneously a high school diploma, industry certifications, and an associate degree or up to 60 college credits. What's unique about our early-middle college and what did raise questions from the state is the fact that we have the opportunity and our plan to offer opportunities in all six career zones because we are going for the associates in general studies. Students can choose their pathway, so arts, communications, skilled trades, human services, natural resources, et cetera. Wherever their heart is leading them, we have an opportunity for them in our early-middle college. And of course, this is offered at no cost to our families. We're covering in full tuition, fees, books, nutrition, and the success shuttle, success shuttle or transportation to the college in this coming year. Our early-middle college is unique because we offer students the opportunity to enter in ninth, 10th, or 11th grade, and we are one of only 5% of early-middle colleges in the nation that is actually pursuing partnerships with more than one post-secondary. This is really special. There are only two other early-middle colleges in the state of Michigan that have more than one post-secondary partner. Obviously, we're starting this work with Wayne County Community College District because they were so welcoming as partners and getting this off the ground. We are in the middle of developing and very close to inking memos of understanding with Lawrence Tech and Madonna. These are very close to the work that Dr. Dignan is leading in our organization as the early-middle college pathway in Lawrence Tech will connect students to the Blue Devil Scholarship that's available, so they can actually receive a four-year university degree at the cost of less than one year of undergraduate education. And then, of course, Madonna University, we're looking to partner with them for teacher, teacher education. We are exploring additional partnerships with Henry Ford and Schoolcraft so that we'll be able to round out and give our students lots of choices. Our application is open. It's a relatively simple application that engages students in the ability to reflect on essentially, will they have the time to do this? There is a time commitment from the families and from the students. And to comprise a small essay that actually shows their ability to do some college-level critical thinking. There is a recommendation form that is digital, and they can pass out the link to two people to recommend them. And of course, we'll do a small interview with them and their high school counselor just to make sure they really truly understand what they're signing up for. Our timeline is really quick this year. Our window to apply is open, it closes May 20. We will do interviews near the end of May, and we will notify our families by June 15. Our families will get that notification. Those that have been accepted will do some placement testing at WCCCD during late June, early July. We will host an onsite decision day on June 13 at the William B. Ford Career Tech Center where we basically finalize any educational development planning that was, that's required for students, get their schedules in place for the coming year. And then we will follow up in August with some success planning. We'll do a success seminar. Our students will go on a field trip to Wayne County Community College District with us. We'll learn the ins and outs of how to access resources there, how to be successful there. And of course, because we care, this is fully a wraparound support, we're gonna office, offer a college parent support session during that event also. Our next steps are really to get kids enrolled, get us started, then to really start to plan out, what does the next five years, how do we grow this program? What does the growth of this program look like? Who does it reach as we grow? And who are, who are additional partners to bring to the table? What questions might you have?
Questions, Mr. Neal?
Once a student aligns themselves with one of these colleges, do they stay aligned with that college? Is there no opportunity to switch at a later time? And whether, if they could switch, are any of the programs recognized in the other colleges?
Okay. So all of our programs will start with students taking courses that are what's called in the Michigan Talent Agreement, Michigan Transfer Credit Agreement. And that means that, for example, if I take Calculus I at LTU, it counts for Calculus I at Michigan, Michigan State, or any of the other schools that are participating. So while, so there could be some transferability of these credits from institution to institution. Now, to recommend, my recommendation is that once they pick a school, that they stay in that path through the end of the associate degree because that is the only way that we can really ensure that they, they hit. If that is what we're aiming for, that's the only way that we can guarantee that they meet all of those requirements in the five years or three to five years that they're going to be in the early-middle college.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yeah.
First of all, it's good to hear that we're partnering with Wayne County Community College District. When they do, when they go on their field trip, will it be to the Tett Scott campus or Taylor's?
It will be to the.
Hagerty?
The Hagerty campus, yes, thank you. New to Wayne County still.
Thank you. Other members? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is gonna be a presentation on our Young Fives curriculum. We're gonna make a proposal. We launched kind of as a pilot this year in a couple lanes. We actually saw an increase in enrollment by having our Young Five, or as I like to call it, transitional kindergarten. Next year, we're hoping to launch some more sections of it across the district. So I'm gonna ask that Ms. Kate Brohl come up, and she's gonna give a quick presentation. And she's bringing her team.
All right, good evening, thank you for having us here tonight. As Dr. Dignan mentioned, we had the first year of Young Fives program this year, and all four of the teachers are standing behind me, and they will present the proposal to the curriculum to go along with this new program that we're doing. So I have Megan Sokolowski, Young Fives teacher, Cassie Jacobowski, Cara Mitter, and Sarah DeBarrow. Pass it over to you, Sarah.
Hello, good evening, thanks for having us. As you know, we're a new pilot program this year in Wayne Westland. Early learning's key component to the success of every child. In Michigan, children who are five years old by December 1st of 2022 can enroll in our Young Fives program. The program's designed for students eligible for kindergarten but require a little bit more time to develop those social, emotional, physical, or cognitive skills a little bit further. Students in our Young Five program use a pre-kindergarten curriculum coupled with play-based learning experiences, and those are meant to reinforce their social and academic social development. As part of laying the foundation for this program this year, we were also given the opportunity to pilot two different programs, curriculums. As Kate mentioned, we offered Young Fives in four buildings this year, Graham, Hamilton, Schweitzer, and Wildwood, and we're excited to add to our team next year a classroom at Hicks. We are proudly featured in the Metro Parent for Southeast Michigan, and it detailed a little bit more about our mission and what our district has to offer. Now that you know a little bit more about our program, let's talk about why we're here. We're here asking you guys tonight for a role in action to be taken in order to approve our new Young Five curriculum. We wanted to be clear what curriculum means. Sometimes educators refer to curriculum as standards being taught. Sometimes people say curriculum is material or resources. Our working definition is that curriculum is based on standards. In Wayne Westland, we are referring to curriculum as a research-based resource provided to teachers that include a scope and sequence, materials for our students, assessments, and easy-to-use instructional materials for teachers. The majority of the major steps in our process are included here, and these were the steps we used to adopt any curriculum here in our district. So during this school year, we were at it as a grade level. Our team work formed in August where we reviewed material with two publishers. In September, we began piloting Wonders materials. In October, we reviewed all of the preschool standards. And from September through March, all of us piloted two separate, different curriculums. The two curriculums were collaborative classrooms and Wonders. All of the tools we used and all of our work was then shared with the Curriculum Council on March 15. During that, after that presentation, they, we recommended the curriculum to Curriculum Council, and it was, it was approved unanimously. Now I'm gonna pass over to Cara, and she's gonna explain best practices and our recommendation.
So hello, good evening, everyone. Throughout the entire process, we grounded our work in research, including essential instructional practices and literacy, guaranteed and viable curriculum, the preschool state standards, and culturally irrelevant texts. This helped build a foundation for the need and provide a common understanding of how we would choose and evaluate a program. Our recommendation to the board tonight is to adopt the Wonders by McGraw-Hill for all of the Young Five classrooms. Wonders scored exemplar in every area assessed. The Teacher's Edition of Wonders, which is also available digitally, provided comprehensive support and guidance for small group instruction, including differentiation for all students, integrated English language learner support, and weekly social-emotional learning lessons. Basic sign language is also offered to help our students who need that extra assistance with their verbal language. Wonders offers options for teachers to customize our lessons to build strong readers and writers in the pre-K through 5th grade. With flexible pathways to meet a variety of classroom needs, a wealth of resources to support the units of study, and unitized student and teacher materials that include complex, authentic texts, Wonders empowers educators to find our own balanced instructional path while providing rigorous instruction. One thing that stood out above the rest with the Wonders curriculum is the depth of rigor that was expected of all of our students. The Teacher's Edition covers cross-curricular concepts such as writing, math, science, social studies, and our favorite, their hands-on center activities. So now I would like to hand it over to Cassie, so she can tell you more about Wonders.
Good evening. I don't know if I need my glasses or not here. All right. I want to tell you more about what is provided in our package we are adopting. Each classroom will have their own copy of Common Text in big book form. These books include a collection of rich stories and informational selections by award-winning authors and illustrators. Many of these stories discuss culturally relevant texts as well as address social-emotional topics. There are also a plethora of hands-on materials that will be provided to each classroom teacher to utilize throughout lessons. These can be used in whole-group instruction, small-group instruction independently, and as a continual reference for both teachers and students. It includes high-frequency word cards, interactive read-aloud cards, photo cards. flip charts are also included. As you know, Wayne Westland places a high emphasis on social-emotional learning. We were very pleased to discover that Wonders partners with Sesame Workshop to provide an integrated approach to social and emotional learning skills within this Wonders curriculum. The key SEL foundations are sequenced through three interrelated strands: approaches to learning, social and emotional development, and executive function. Wonders will support our work in this area. Wonders brings the best in blended learning to our classrooms. Every print resource is also available digitally, and the digital workspace includes thousands more readers, hundreds of games, interactive texts, videos, songs, and homeschool connections. And now I'm going to let Megan finish us up.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. In addition to the features that Cassie has already mentioned, there's a variety of assessments available that can be used within the Balanced Assessment System. As our District Assessment System team prepares the recommendations for assessments needed in each level, these tools will be an integral part of supporting our teachers and students in order to assess the student learning and their needs. Moving forward, our next steps include summer work and professional development. Our summer work schedule is to start mid-June where we will begin to align priority standards to scope, I'm sorry, scope and sequence, analyze benchmark assessments, and use the common benchmark assessments. We have professional development available when we needed it. We also plan to sustain professional learning to new staff each year. In summary, on behalf of our entire team, we are thrilled to present this recommendation to the board, and we look forward to your feedback. Thank you for listening to us tonight, and we wanted to open it up to any questions.
Questions, members of the board? Comment? Mr. Buckle?
Thank you. So I have some experience with the Young Five. About 15 or 16 years ago, I had a granddaughter winter kindergarten as a young five-year-old. She wasn't ready. The teacher was clever enough to see that she wasn't ready, moved her out of that program into a Young Five. Instead of continuing to struggle as a kindergarten student, she had one year in Young Five and blossomed as a kindergartner the next year and went on through school with, with just, well, she did very well in school. And I think that the program that you're talking about isn't for every single kid, but for a select group of young five-year-olds who don't quite have either the academic or the emotional makeup to survive in a kindergarten class, this is a godsend. So I thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Ms. Albrecht?
So this is exclusively a pre-K curriculum, is that correct?
Yes.
So I guess that implies students are in the kindergarten cycle for two years. Can they find a way out? That's probably the wrong way to put it. Probably the wrong way to put it. Can, I mean, can they?
No, we know what you're asking. So the intention is that they're in the right placement, and then they'll go to kindergarten after the year of Young Fives. But as we know with kids, if somebody jumps up and they're ready for first grade, then we'll make that move when it becomes noticed.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Neal?
You mentioned that the curriculum was adopted unanimously. Who was it involved in the voting of the curriculum?
Sure. So that was our Curriculum Council that approved it unanimously. So we have our monthly meetings with Curriculum Council, and any new course or any new curriculum goes to them. And so our Curriculum Council is made up of 10 WWEA members, 10 administrators, whether they're WABA or WACOA, and myself, and there are two other teachers who are executive board members on that group.
No parents of students or anything?
Nope. Our Curriculum Council is just made up of staff members.
And the members? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, they're sitting down. I just want to say thank you again. You guys are real trailblazers, and especially considering even two years ago, it was just a thought. So thank you for all your hard work and the trial and error. I know at times it's probably a little frustrating, but again, you guys have really set a mark that we as a district are going to meet. So thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
The next group, too, are trailblazers. We actually did not have a college and career readiness department. They're going to frame some of the amazing things that they've done in the last year. And again, sometimes I marvel at how they get it all done, but Mr. Beebe and Ms. Mitter are going to give a quick presentation on some of the highlights of the past year.
Thank you so much, President Cox, to the board, to the community, Superintendent Dignan. Thank you all, first of all, for this time and this opportunity. So once again, my name is Gerald Beebe, Executive Director of College and Career Readiness and Social-Emotional Learning. And so we're going to just give you a brief overview of the work that we've been doing over the past seven months. And so, once again, and also with me is Maria Mitter, the incredible supervisor. All right. And so, so our team is comprised also of our CCR advisors, Cullen Jenkins over at Wayne Memorial High School, and he works as an advisor there to coordinate opportunities, oversee EDPs, and as well as the career pathways for our students. Eric Jackson also does the same for our students over at John Glenn High School. And so as we talk about college and career readiness, our focus, we focus there 16 career pathways, but just to give you a breakdown of trades, military, college, entrepreneurship, and workforce development. And we start, first of all, with working with our students, but as you'll find out, is that we're also expanding and talking and meeting with staff throughout the district as well. Our focus, K5, is among, is about awareness. Seven through eight is exploration, and then nine through 12 is preparation.
Good evening. So I'll just give you a couple highlights of what each of those levels looks like. So at that K5 awareness level, that's where we're bringing in guest speakers, or we're having our students from William D. Ford, that's my nephew up in the corner, who's in the fire program, and bringing out the firemen and things, and the police officers to the classroom, and some other things like field trips, lots of field trips, BEABLE, which we'll give you a little highlight in a little bit, and classroom projects, principal for the day. And then we provided each of our elementary buildings this year with college and career readiness libraries that have a wide variety of text for the K5. At the exploration level, at that middle school, students are starting their educational development portfolios. They are also focused on going on very CCR-focused field trips. We will allow them some events that we're going to be planning for the next school year. We did a March Madness Spirit Week, which we'll talk about. They visit our William D. Ford. We're hosting a college fair, which we'll talk about as well. And at that 912 level, we have our CCR advisors in place as well as a number of other activities. We're going to be establishing some job shadowing opportunities and internships, as well as our 10th graders going over to William D. Ford. We have test preparation opportunities, college tours, college fairs. Again, we spoke about the middle college here tonight, lots of scholarship opportunities. There's a lot going on at each of the levels. So these are some of the trips that our students have been part of this year. We took some kids out to EMU to spend the day with the EMU ROTC cadets and had an awesome experience and got to learn about the opportunities that the ROTC program offers at EMU. Took some kids out to Plastipack. Some kids spent the day down at Autorama. So we've got a wide variety of opportunities for students going on.
And so it's not just important for our students, but it's also important for our staff to find out about many of the new careers and different opportunities that are out there for our students. For many years, for me as a counselor, I always felt like if we didn't send students to college, like we had failed, or that the student had failed. But there's nothing further that's not true, because there's so many different jobs and different professions as it relates to the trades and different opportunities. And so with that being said, though, we want our staff to know what else is out there for them. And so we have worked on industry tours. We've taken staff to the Mus Road Show where they learned about a number of different trades. We've also taken staff to construction career days as well, college campus tours. We had an incredible tour over at EMU. And so we're continuing that through book studies as well as through professional development.
Yes, and I know you're aware that we receive some federal dollars from Congresswoman Talib. That's going to allow us to develop a workforce development program for our students, and that's where we will establish the job shadowing internship opportunities for our students ages 14 and over, and they will have a paid internship in cooperation with the district, with our municipalities, and with some of our partners. And then at the culmination of their internship, they will be given a, we will cover the cost of driver's training, I'm sorry, driver's education, because we know that that's a barrier to students getting their license. It's about $800 to get your driver's license these days, and so we know a lot of our students don't do that. So that'll just open up one more door and break down one more barrier for our students as they're entering the workforce.
And so as we talked about the EDPs, the tool that we utilize for EDPs is called Zello. And so basically, each student is able to develop a student portfolio where they're able to explore interests, learning styles, and set up a career matchmaker that allows them to see the different careers that relate to their personality, to their likes, to their dislikes, et cetera. So we're really excited about Zello, and we also utilize, and that's from grade seven through 12, but we also utilize BEABLE through grades two through five. And to talk about that, we're going to ask Kate Brohl to come up and share.
Hi again. So we collaborate across departments, me from the Curriculum and Instruction Department, and then with the College and Career Readiness. So we're always working together with the things that you see in front of you. So BEABLE is a new program that we have available, digital platform for all of our second through fifth grade students. Every one of the students has access to that through Clever. And what's unique about this is it's not just literacy-based, but it is based on career awareness. And so we have multiple programs that are based on students' reading levels, but this is based on their interest and their career awareness, or their career interest. And so I have a statement here from a teacher from Roosevelt, Ms. Thompson. "As a teacher, I love hearing my students' conversations about their future careers. BEABLE has them thinking of what they want to do when they grow up. They have real conversations with peers, and they love sharing their dreams." I put my fourth grade son on it as well, and he said, "Mom, wait, I want to go back to that career stuff." So it's just really neat for them at that young age to start looking at things a little bit differently.
Thank you, Kate. And so also, we, this year, we had an opportunity to, and through the blessing of Dr. Dignan, to bring NEPRIS on as a tool that we're going to utilize. And so right now, we've got a soft launch at Hicks, Schweitzer, and as well as Adams Middle School. And the beautiful thing about NEPRIS is that basically for those folks who, a lot of times you want to watch a video about a career, but NEPRIS brings a live person into the classroom virtually, and they will share experiences about the career that they're involved in. So just for an example, there was a classroom that was interested, that was a theater class, and so they wanted to find out more about theater. And so NEPRIS was able to get an individual who worked on Broadway as The Beast. And so that person talked to the students, and they got a more of a hands-on experience. And so this is an incredible program that we're looking forward to, as I said before, a soft launch right now, and then spreading throughout the district in the weeks to come. Now also, March Madness, this was an activity that we did throughout the district, and when we talked about the preparation, exploration, and so this was a chance for our students throughout the district, as well as our staff, to have a spirit week in terms of where we, excuse me, where they learned about the different careers, but they also had an opportunity to dress and recognize our William D. Ford, on William D. Ford Wednesdays, they dress for their careers, and everybody had a good time. So you can see from the picture, it was a wonderful time across the district, but we also shared important information as it relates to college and career readiness. This is me. And on tomorrow, tomorrow, we're going to have our HBCU College Fair. We've got a number of different HBCU colleges that are coming in to represent, as well as a number of programs, NAACP, and just some great programs that we're going to have. We're going to have speakers that will talk about Show Me the Money in terms of helping with paying for colleges, some other prizes, experiences, and we hope to have a good time tomorrow night over at the William D. Ford Center.
And then next year, we are looking to host Discover Your Path, where we're going to highlight a variety of different career pathways in the trades, in the military, healthcare, and more. And we're looking to host that over at Hype and be able to bring kids at different various grades through Hype so that they can be exposed. So we were hoping to do it this spring, but we're going to push it and make sure it's successful and do it right in the fall or next spring. But we'll get there. And then we've got some exciting summer programs happening. We've got an Aspire Camp where we're going to do some soft skill development with our students. And then we are going to end it with some dining at She Wolf in Detroit. We're really excited about that. And then some Trip Tuesdays where we're going to take students to a variety of different college campuses in our region, and as far as Saginaw Valley. And then we've got two different college prep camps coming up that will basically kind of get students ready for what college looks like and get them thinking about what they need to do to prepare. And then we have a partnership with U of M Genetics Immersion Camp where students will actually, will receive a stipend for the summer, and we're looking to identify four students for that. So we'll be working with our schools to be identifying those students here shortly. And with that, that is, if you scan that QR code, that'll take you to our CCR hub where we're trying to consolidate all of our information for our community and our families so that you can easily access all of the great stuff that's happening in college and career readiness. So with that, if there's any questions, we'll take it.
What are you doing in your spare time?
You know, we're having a lot of fun. It's been a lot of fun doing this work and giving these kids these opportunities.
Members of the board? Very exciting work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda, ladies and gentlemen, 251.22, citizens' comments. This is the portion of the meeting reserved for citizens who wish to address the board on items which appear on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone wishing to address the board on agenda items at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda, 252.22. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved by Mr. Albrecht, supported by Dr. Weaver. Roll call vote, please, Mr. Neal.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mr. Buckle?
Yes.
President Cox?
High vote, yes.
All in a favor.
Thank you. 252.22, Board of Education Committee reports. Superintendent Evaluation Committee, Mr. Albrecht, you have a report.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. The following is a summary of the minutes of Superintendent Evaluation Committee, which met on Wednesday, March 9th, 2022, at 4:30. This committee will meet periodically prior to the formal evaluation of the superintendent in June of each calendar year. Present was myself, Treasurer May. Trustee, Mr. Neal, was not able to attend. Superintendent Dignan and his secretary. The recommendation for artifacts, which will be presented to the board by the superintendent for his evaluation, will include college and career readiness data, presentations for professional learning communities, EDP data, FAFSA data, and other data points and artifacts yet to be determined. Information will be presented with solutions. Dr. Dignan noted that all students are receiving the same power standards, which are the most important for students to learn. Work will be completed so we can empower our staff and base our work on the needs of our students. If it's not getting to the students, the work we do doesn't matter. Students need to know that adults care about them. We need to develop authentic relationships with them, and teachers need flexibility to do what is best for kids. Portrait of a Graduate will include skills each student will possess after graduating or exiting, I should say, each grade. Work we do next year will be guided by the standards we are laying out this year. Student achievement data and NWEA data will be provided and used for student achievement data per state requirement to utilize student achievement in the evaluation process. The rollout of District Superintendent Board Goal Adoption. The Board of Education has not yet approved district goals, but will adopt them as their own no later than August. Surveys will be sent out for input, and goals will filter down to school improvement plans. Board members will complete ad hoc work in the spring. The district has been building on strategic plan that was started by a previous superintendent, Dr. Harmel, and her cabinet. This will also be an artifact, which will include the voices of stakeholders. Progress monitoring toward current goals, the data will be collected to present, and future meetings will discuss how progress is being made. The next meeting of this committee will take place on May 16th, 2022. The Superintendent Summit of Evaluation is tentatively scheduled for June. future meetings will discuss how progress is being made. The next meeting of this committee will take place on May sixteenth, 2022. The Superintendent Summit of Evaluation is tentatively scheduled for June thirteenth, 2022, at 5:15 PM.
Are there any comments from members on the board on Mr. Albrecht and the committee's work? Just to restate, what Mr. Albrecht and his committee is doing is redefining our superintendent evaluation policy, so that the evaluation process presents something that is more usable to the board in their evaluation of the superintendent and the direction of the school district. So thank you for your work, Mr. Albrecht. You've also been doing some work on the Policy Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Policy Committee met on Monday, April eleventh, 2022, at 6:00 PM. Present was Secretary Heinz, Vice President Albrecht, Dr. Dignan, and his secretary. One, under the agenda, disciplinary hearing language, the code of conduct and board policy need to be cleaned up. The appeal process has too many steps, and it would be ideal to address this by June. Transporting students within the district. It was proposed that the students should be returned to school if the principal is still in the building. If the principal is not in the building, the student should be brought to the administrative office. Generic permission slip for in-district field trips. All of our schools are to have a generic permission slip signed by the parent to allow in-district field trips. For students driving between schools, having students driving between Wayne Memorial and William D. Ford Career Tech Center could be a liability. It was suggested that there should not be parking passes issued to students who attend Career Tech and drive their personal vehicles as the district provides transportation to and from Career Tech. About donors choosing, it is concerning that there has been one hundred fifty thousand dollars donated by Donors Choose to Wayne Westland Community Schools to make purchases without prior approval. It is believed that these items should be considered district property. There needs to be a process and procedure for these types of donations, or if they should be stopped altogether. Students who are not picked up after school, district needs a process and procedure for what should be done when a student is not picked up after school. Finally, Neola. Neola will be able to make the district's board policy and administration regulations easier to navigate. The service will provide links between the board policy and the administrative regulations for subjects that overlap, and label each policy and regulation with revision dates. A meeting has been requested with Neola to get the details and the cost of their service. The meeting adjourned at 6:30 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Albrecht. The third report under committees is the Finance Committee Report, and delivered by Mr. Neal. Mr. Neal?
Yes. Finance Committee Meeting of the Board of Trustees of Wayne Westland Community Schools was held Tuesday, April nineteenth, 2022, beginning at 4:30 PM via Zoom. Dr. Dignan shared information regarding a partnership with Beaumont to submit a grant for a school-based health clinic at John Glenn High School. We will receive notification in mid-May if the grant is accepted. Mrs. Nathan and Dr. Shamy shared the district's state and federal grant allocations and how we are leveraging funds to support our students academically, socially, and emotionally. Dr. Wenzel shared a cadre of technology purchases to support our students using a variety of funding sources. Mr. Spiezak updated the committee on the recommendations for asbestos abatement at Schweitzer, Edison, and Hamilton Elementary, and also office furniture recommendations at Franklin and Stevenson. Mrs. Cleves presented the investment and budget to actual report, along with monthly check register. Dr. Dignan thanked his team and shared district updates. Mr. Neal, Mr. Buckaloo, and Ms. May thanked the team for their hard work and the detailed presentations. The meeting was adjourned at 5:10 PM. Our next meeting is May seventeenth, 2022, at 4:30 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Neal, and thank you to all of the members that serve on these committees. 253.22 is the review and approval of business service and finance items, Mrs. Cleves?
Yes, good evening. The first one is a recommendation for asbestos abatement contract. This is for Edison, Hamilton, and Schweitzer Elementary Schools. There was a public bid opening held on April fifth, 2022, and I'm requesting board approval to award contracts to Global Green Service Group for Edison and Hamilton Elementary Schools in the amount of eighteen thousand five hundred dollars. An award to qualified abatement services for Schweitzer Elementary School for sixty-eight thousand dollars. The total award recommendation amount is eighty-six thousand five hundred dollars, and this project will be charged to the bond fund.
Is there a motion?
Slow move.
Moved by Mr. Buckaloo, support by Mr. Albrecht. Roll call vote, please, Mr. Neal. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please, Mr. Neal.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
I also vote yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
President Cox?
I vote yes.
Five yay.
Okay, thank you, excuse me. Next motion passes. The next issue, Mrs. Cleves?
Recommendation to purchase furnishings for middle schools. I'm requesting board approval to purchase furnishings for our three middle schools. This is for interior environments, and if approved, the cost will not exceed one hundred forty-four thousand eight hundred twenty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents, and this will be charged to the bond furniture fund.
Is there a motion?
Slow move.
Moved by Dr. Weaver, support?
Support.
Mr. Neal, discussion? Roll call vote, please, Mr. Neal.
Myself, I vote yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
President Cox?
I vote yes.
Five yay.
Mrs. Cleves?
The next one is a recommendation to purchase technology items. We received an award for the ECF grant, and I'm requesting approval from the Board of Education to purchase a quantity of three thousand five hundred and seventy ninth-generation iPads with LTE capability and one thousand six hundred eighty-two Chromebooks, also with LTE capability. This also includes one year of filtered LTE data service. If approved by the board, the grant award will provide funds in the amount of three million forty-five thousand six hundred three dollars and eighteen cents, and additional costs to support these initiatives will be covered by our ESAR funds.
Is there a motion?
Slow move.
Moved by Mr. Albrecht, support by Mr. Buckaloo. Is there discussion? I'd just like to say how exciting it is to be able to make a purchase like this in this school district. Roll call vote, please, Mr. Neal.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Myself, yes. President Cox?
Yes.
Five yay.
Mrs. Cleves?
The next item is a recommendation to purchase Title I technology purchases. I'm requesting approval from the Board of Education to purchase a quantity of up to eight hundred and fifty-four Dell Latitude Chromebooks. If approved, these purchases will be charged to building Title I accounts and will not exceed a total cost of three hundred fifty-six thousand eight hundred and seven dollars.
Is there a motion?
Slow move.
Moved by Dr. Weaver, support by Mr. Buckaloo. Is there discussion? Mr. Neal?
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
President Cox?
Yes.
Five yay.
Mrs. Cleves?
Next up is a recommendation to purchase 2022 summer school technology. I'm requesting approval from the Board of Education to purchase a quantity of up to two hundred Dell Latitude Chromebooks and two hundred iPads to support our summer school and continuing educational technology programs. This will also include shipping costs, licensing, and one year of warranty and support for Chromebooks, and three years of Apple Care coverage in cases. If approved, these purchases will be charged to ESAR accounts and will not exceed a total cost of one hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Is there a motion?
Slow move.
And Mr. Albrecht, support? Or, and Mr. Neal, discussion? Dr. Weaver?
This is a separate purchase of what we're already purchasing.
Correct.
So why do we need the additional?
This is actually for the summer school program.
I understand. Why couldn't they use what we've already purchased?
I can refer to Mr. Wenzel, Technology Director.
Thank you, Seth.
Yes, sir. So the question, as I understand it, is what the purpose of the summer school technology will do on top of all the other purchases. The ECF grant stipulates that these devices are to support home remote learning and learning gaps and connectivity issues that we have in our households in the community. The devices for summer school are aside from that, so it'll be beyond the earmarked K through four assignments that the iPads will have. It'll be available to students K through twelve in the district this summer, and they'll support programs such as media and STEM and other initiatives ongoing.
All right, thank you. Would it be fair to say that we're just showing this expenditure in a separate account, allocating for a separate use?
Yes.
But they're all the same machines and being used by the same school district, allocated to different departments?
Yes, by much.
Okay, thank you. Other, just?
I'll just make this comment. We get funding from a wide variety of sources. We get ESAR funds, three different versions, maybe four. We get bond money, we get general fund money. All of these different pots of money come to us, but each of them has its own spending requirements attached to it. And so sometimes, we run into situations like what we're looking at now. We're spending the money appropriately according to the fund that the money is coming from.
Yes.
And in any event, it's all going to benefit our students. On all of these proposals tonight, it's a large chunk of change, but it's being offered to our students in a very meaningful way, and we will get value from those dollars spent.
Any members of the board? Just the idea that every single student in our school district is connected to the internet at all times with a modern device that doesn't have bugs in it, that's new, it just completely changes forever the playing field for every single kid. There isn't anything more fair than everyone having connectivity. It's just, it's monumental, and as Mr. Buckaloo said, the monies that we're spending were long ago allocated. We received grant monies to make these expenditures specifically for this cause, so. Thank you, Seth. Do we need a vote?
Yes, we do.
Please.
Do we make, yeah, never mind. Go ahead.
Well, maybe it was going to be really good. It wasn't.
No, it was a point.
We'll go under the bodies.
It was a point of order, and we already did it, so. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Myself, yes. President Cox?
Yes.
Point of order.
Five, five yay.
Where did you, where did the bus leave you on? 254.22 is review and approval of the human resource items. Mr. Kapulka?
Point of order. We're missing one.
What, did we go past you?
I yield my time to Ms. Cleves.
I have one more request.
Didn't spend enough money?
No, not yet. Recommendation to purchase 2022 Act 18 and 61(c) technology purchases. I'm requesting approval from the Board of Education to purchase a quantity of up to seventy-nine Dell laptop computers. These are to support our special education programs, and thirty-one Dell desktop computers to support career technical education programs. If approved, the purchase of laptops will be charged to our Act 18 accounts and includes three years of accidental damage coverage. The purchase of desktops will be charged to the 61(c) account and includes one year of warranty and support. The total cost of these purchases will not exceed one hundred and four thousand dollars.
Is there a motion?
Slow move.
Dr. Weaver, supported by Mr. Albrecht, discussion? Roll call vote, please, Mr. Neal?
Myself, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
And Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
President Cox?
Thank you.
Five yay.
Are you all done, Mrs. Cleves?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Sorry about that. 254.22, Mr. Kapulka, you're up.
Thank you, President Cox, members of the board. I believe Beth might have had an issue this evening, so she wasn't at the board meeting. I don't think she's here, but I'm still going to introduce her. So Beth Warwick comes to us from Livonia. She was recently hired as a coordinator of preschool education. She received her Bachelor's of Science from West Virginia University, Master's of Arts and Speech Pathology from University of Akron, and then most recently, Grand Valley State University, where she received her Master's of Education in Ed Leadership in Special Education Administration. Most recently, she was at Livonia Public Schools, where we stole her, quite frankly. She had fifteen years of experience as a speech pathologist, and then before that, she, and actually, most recently, I should say, for the last three years, she has been a team leader of special education. So we're really, really fortunate to bring her on board and have her lead the coordinating efforts in the preschool program.
Is there a motion?
Slow move.
Dr. Weaver?
Support.
Support by Mr. Neal? Discussion? You just keep stealing them. Don't you worry about it. Roll call vote, please, Mr. Neal?
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Myself, yes. President Cox?
Yes.
Five yay.
Thank you. Sir?
My second recommendation, she's here this evening with his family, is Mr. Nick James. Nick James is the Assistant Principal at John Glenn High School. So Nick's background, his education, he's a fellow Eagle, so he received his Bachelor's of Science in Social Studies and History from Eastern Michigan University, and then his Master's of Arts in Educational Leadership also from Eastern Michigan University. He has multiple certifications in history and social studies, and then his, again, his education, K-12 certification. He has a unique experience, which has prepared him well to be an administrator, as an Assistant Principal at John Glenn High School. So for approximately nine years, he was a teacher in the classroom with us in the Wayne Westland School District in Belleville. He was in Whiteford for a short period of time. And then he served as an instructional coach in our district, so again, having a different lens and different experience. A few things that Nick had the opportunity to do, so he served as an interim Assistant Principal at the beginning of the year, when Dr. Dignan ended up making some administrative moves in our district, and he served in that capacity starting in November. And it's also one of those things, when you hear about his interactions with students and his connections, that this was probably the easiest decision that we've made in a very long period of time. So it's my pleasure to recommend Nick James for the Assistant Principal at John Glenn High School.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion?
Slow move.
Moved by Mr. Neal, support by Dr. Weaver. Is there discussion?
Yeah.
Mr. Albrecht?
About time, huh?
Thanks for everything. We appreciate it, sir. Roll call vote, please, Mr. Neal?
Mr. Albrecht?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
And President Cox?
Resounding yes.
Five yay.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you for being here with your family. Would you like to say a few words?
You only have two minutes, Nick.
I just want to say thank you to the board, thank you to members of the executive cabinet, thank you to, man, there are so many friends in this room right now, and relationships, and just colleagues. Thanks for all the support of this district. Thanks for growing me as a student, as an educator, and thanks for continuing to mentor me through the rest of my career. I'm blessed to be here. Thanks so much.
Thanks for being there when we need you. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda, 255.22 is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Dignan?
Okay, I'm going to start with Mr. James there. First of all, thank you for bringing your family, but more importantly, if you were to cut this man out there, he would bleed in Wayne Westland. He was homegrown, loves his place, the pride, everything you have is contagious. I'll be honest with you, you've had the best interview I've ever seen, serving in that capacity from November until now, so it was long overdue. I agree with what Mr. Albrecht said. I thank you for putting Wayne Westland first. You can see it if you meet this guy. He's all about kids, he's all about our community, so again, we can give him one more round of applause. I want to congratulate Beth, too, on her. She's doing a phenomenal job, really, the climate and culture. You can feel it in her building. I was actually over there last week, and it's just amazing what she's been able to do in a short time. I do want to highlight Ms. Amanda Davis. I don't mean to embarrass her, but as we saw the college and crew readiness presentation this evening, she's doing the same thing with Mr. Beebe with SEL. A lot of initiatives that we have around mental health wouldn't happen without Amanda's work. Carisolus, Big Green, I feel bad, sometimes I feel, how does she do it? Blessings in a Backpack, she's been the point person there, and Amanda, I just want to say thank you for everything you do on a daily basis. If we could give a little more applause. Teacher and staff appreciation is May first to the seventh. I want to thank all of our educators, all of our teachers. This year has been a difficult one. I think we're out of the tunnel now, but I think everybody's given their heart and soul to this year, so hopefully we'll find different ways to honor our staff in the coming weeks. Legally Blonde, John Glenn's, I'm going to read from my script, because I'll get yelled at if I don't, so. John Glenn's Drama Club's spring performance of Legally Blonde will be from May fifth to the seventh, seven p.m. The performance will take place at John Glenn High School Auditorium. Tickets can be purchased at the door. Adult tickets are six. Students, staff, and children are five. We had two Skill USA winners from John Glenn High School that are at our Career Tech Center. Andrea Hayes and John Harris will be going to Skills USA Nationals in Atlanta for the Emergency Medical Technician Competition. They were state champions. The fire programs keep, it keeps piling on awards. I'm very proud of the progress they've made in a short period of time. Samantha Hart, a John Glenn student again, in the Career Tech Firefighter Program, has been selected to receive the Michigan two thousand twenty-two Breaking Traditions Award. This award commends students that have high-level accomplishments in career tech and programs that are non-traditional for their gender and for contributing toward increasing awareness of non-traditional career options. They're actually going to do a state press conference on Samantha, and we're very pleased and excited for her to be a trailblazer in that area. Media Productions and our high school bands have been winning a number of awards and accomplishments throughout this year, and we're proud of their accomplishments. Ms. Amer talked about our middle college program. It's moving fast, but again, we're excited about all the opportunities that it brings us. Class of two thousand twenty-two graduation ceremonies will occur Saturday, June fourth, at Eastern Michigan University at the Convocation Center, ten a.m. for John Glenn High School and two p.m. for Wayne Memorial High School. All graduating seniors will get six tickets for graduations. Families can purchase additional tickets for five dollars each through the Eastern Michigan Ticket Office beginning May second. Please note, purchased tickets are non-refundable. Our summer programs are going to be second to none in Wayne Westland Community Schools. We have a team of educators, and a lot of the people you see sitting in the crowd have all had a hand in it. It's so comprehensive, and it offers everything from athletics to art to enrichments to remediation. It's just incredible what has been accomplished there. If you get a chance, please go to our website. All of these are free to our families, and again, the work that's taking place has happened since January till now, so again, I tip my hats to people in the audience that played a part in that. Please save the date, because Wayne Westland, we're going to have something that we've never had before in August twentieth. It's the Welcome Back to School Fair for our community. It will be from twelve to four. We're in the planning stages, but we'll have a free event for our students and families, including food, games, activities, a petting farm, school supplies, and other giveaways. We're looking for student groups and staff who'd like to volunteer to help on this day. There will be a sign-up form shared in an upcoming issue of this week in Wayne Westland, so please stay tuned. Last one is congratulations to Mary Davis and Melissa Wiseong from the Transportation Department. Both ladies were presented the two thousand twenty-two Wayne County Excellent in Transportation Award, and were honored at a banquet, so we are very, very proud of them. And on that note, I will turn it back.
Thank you, Dr. Dignan. The next item on our agenda, two-five-six-point-two-two, citizens' comments on non-agenda items. This is the portion of the meeting for citizens wishing to address the board on items that did not appear on tonight's agenda. The opportunity is now. Anyone wish to address the board? Seeing no one, we will move on to two-five-seven-point-two-two, review and recommendations, members of the Board of Education. Mr. Buckaloo?
Thank you, sir. Well, as always, we have to thank the elementary school kids who lead us in the pledge. This evening, they were from Hamilton. I'd like to thank each of them and to their principal, Ms. Michaels, for bringing them along and getting us off to such a wonderful start, they always do. My congratulations to Ms. Warwick and also to Mr. James for their appointments, respectively, Coordinator of Preschool Education and Assistant Principal at John Glenn High School. By the way, there's a special place in the universe for social studies teachers, and you should know that. God loves us. Nobody else does. But it struck me that Ms. Warwick has no prior contact with Wayne Westland. She's clearly an outsider coming to us. On the other hand, Mr. James is a product of the school district, a student. He's taught here as a teacher, as a coach, as an Assistant Principal in an interim basis before this evening. What a wonderful mix. I think it speaks well of us. It's a healthy mix of outsiders and homegrown people, and I couldn't be more pleased with the hiring that we're doing at this time, so thank you for that. Earlier this month, I attended a meeting of the Wayne County Association of School Boards. It was held not at RISA, as it usually is, but rather down in Lincoln Park at their board office. And on the agenda that night was the election of officers and also an approval of the budget for the upcoming year. And all went well, by the way. We had a presentation on all the good things that are going on at Lincoln Park. Not as good as what's going on here in our district, but they're doing good work in Lincoln Park. There was also a presentation from, kind of a quasi-presentation, from RISA regarding their budget, and I couldn't help but notice the fund balance on their Act eighteen monies. It's obscene. Their fund balance is larger than their budget, and I don't know how they look themselves in the face day after day. They're our friend. Wayne County RISA is very good to us, but in the area of the Act eighteen funding, they need to clear some of that fund equity. Finally, also this month, the Wayne Westland Foundation hosted its inaugural Uncorked and Untapped event. If you don't know about the foundation, it provides funding to classroom project grants, and in a sense, it makes money available where it might otherwise not feel available to teachers who have special projects that they would like to do. All of these projects, by the way, are of benefit to their classes, so it's an educational kind of grant. It was a fun evening. By all accounts, everybody had a great time. It was a social success. It was a financial success, and we had, in attendance, helping with us, several people from the district, some in just a short time, having to make a long drive home. But it was a wonderful evening. We were supported not only by the people who showed up and worked, but also by people who purchased tickets and attended and participated in the silent auctions. So we raised quite a bit of money, and by the way, at our very next meeting, we approved six additional classroom grants totaling in excess of four thousand dollars. So the foundation, which is actually technically no longer a part of Wayne Westland, continues to support Wayne Westland teachers, and so thank you to everyone, especially to Mayor Wild, who made City Hall available to us for that event. I'm looking forward to that event next year, and I hope that we can increase the number of people who participate. It truly was a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Mr. Albrecht?
Thank you, President Cox. I piggyback a little bit on something that Mr. Buckaloo said regarding Act eighteen funds at the county level at RISA. Act eighteen is for students who are significantly severely disabled, and they're in programs that are run by individual school districts in which students travel from other districts to go to them, because there just aren't that many locally. And to understand, and I've dealt with this for a number of years, that they have more dollars in their fund balance, undesigned, than they need for an entire year. So they're collecting tax every year, turning around and sending it out to districts for their programs while hanging on to more money than they actually spent, and we have kids that need it badly, very, very badly. Anyway, I want to thank our Hamilton students for leading us in the pledge. Congratulations to Zoe Bukas on winning the Earl Charbagian District Spelling Bee. I really enjoyed the presentations regarding young fives in the middle college program. Congrats to Nick and to Beth on their appointments. And then finally, special congratulations to the zebra, Lady Zebras, on their season I know how hard they work, and when the superintendent asked them not to take them back to the gym, if he could get away with it, he would. Finally, last week, I had the opportunity to attend the District Improvement Team meeting. It was an online event. Clearly, that team understands the challenges facing our district for improvement, and there are some challenges, but they really showed they're committed to the task. I appreciated that, the opportunity to be part of that, so.
And with that? Thank you, Mr. Albrecht. Dr. Weaver?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I thought the presentations tonight at the beginning of the meeting were off the chart, and I'm thankful that we are moving forward in our district in so many different directions. Congratulations to our new hires. I think about Mr. James. He's an outstanding individual. His credentials are certainly not in question. He has a heart for kids. There's only one thing, really, I have to say to him, and that's, thank God the kids look like their mom. Amen. You'll get that on.
I want you to know I think of them.
Yeah. That concludes my comments for tonight.
Mr. Neal?
For the benefit of everyone here, I have no comments.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. I'd like to say just two things tonight. First, Mr. James, we sure needed your leadership, and John Glenn, I'm so grateful that you were there. The timing was perfect for us. The other thing is, for the first fifty minutes of this meeting, all we did was celebrate students and achievements of people in this school district, and thank you very much. Thank you very much. It was a very fun evening, but probably the most impactful thing that happened tonight was the idea that for the first time ever, every single student in this school district is going to have the same tool of connectivity. That it's just off the chart. Everybody comes from a different background. Parents aren't able to supply every child with all the tools that they need, but with this grant, with this expenditure, we've done that. I think that's just a game changer. I'm so appreciative of it. Thank you, everyone, for coming this evening, for all the work that you've done. Thanks, Mike, and thanks, Shonda, for all of your work. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
By Mr. Albrecht, support by Mr. Neal. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. We are adjourned.